Call to order, the October 26th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember George, who will do our ceremonial opening.
Let's tamper the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
To move.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no recognitions, reports, and presentations for the evening, so we'll move right to Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda. And if you would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing, and that's to your benefit, because public hearing speakers get more time. The three-minute time limit will be strictly enforced. There's a light on the podium, and when that green light turns to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. When the yellow light turns to a flashing red light, I'm going to interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. And I'll ask you to immediately stop your comments at that time. If you're here with a group, I ask that you have a spokesperson for your group. I also ask our speakers not to repeat and reduce repetitive comments. And I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not make remarks from your seats, applaud, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
My name is Tim Devini, and I'm a resident of Cary and a business owner in downtown Cary. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Cary Forward. Cary Forward is a group of Cary citizens numbering over 500, and we are promoting the progressive development of East Cary and Central Cary. Tonight, specifically, I would like to address IKEA. We're very excited to have the opportunity to eat Swedish meatballs every day for the rest of our lives. Actually, no, we're very excited for what IKEA means to the eastern part of Cary and the eastern part of our state. But to be in an area where we will draw tremendous activity, tremendous interest, wonderful opportunities, this is just the beginning, the tip of that iceberg. And Cary Forward is very supportive, and we ask for your support tonight in your vote to vote for IKEA, because we need a IKEA. I made that up.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey, good evening. I live at 307 Tibbetts Rock Drive in Cary. I'm actually here to speak about one of the items on your agenda that is not one of the public hearings. It is 16 REZ 32. It's the rezoning in the North Cary area. I live in that area. Many of my neighbors, obviously all of our neighbors do as well. The staff recommendation was to recommend denial of that. I encourage you to follow that recommendation and go for denial of that. Rationale would be basically this. The North Cary area, we have Cary Parkway, Weston Parkway, no sidewalks across the bridges over Black Creek. So we are somewhat isolated, and so there are very limited parcels that would be available. This is the one of the, actually the last remaining large parcel where any mixed use or commercial could go. We've been waiting for a long time. I know that probably at some level, members of council are probably sick of having to deal with this particular parcel. It's been coming up for a while. What I would say to you is, we agree with you, and it does get old to do that, but we also know that we'll have to live with it for the rest of our lives if it's the wrong piece there. So when you're having trouble making a decision, I always say the Hippocratic Oath is a good one: do no harm. And if we lose the last large parcels there, we are not going to have a great spot. The other piece I will mention, I do think that developers done a good job in terms of working with local neighbors, and we respect that. But this is a different situation. One, this is a parcel of great purpose, because it's the last one available in that area in the isolation we have. The other piece would be, if it's not a rezoning, it's different. Then it's consistent with community goals. That's why we have the process. And now the question simply is, does it work in the immediate use, as long as it's in terms of the visibility and visual impacts? When it's a rezoning, it's different. Now your list of neighbors gets a lot larger, because each parcel matters in terms of how it fits with the other. That's how zoning works. That's how land use works. And so the fact that some neighbors close by are more comfortable is an important data point, but it can't be the only one, because now you have community goals that are no longer to be able to be met at that point. So I asked you to follow the recommendation, to go for denial on that. I do apologize, this would require you to have to go through this one more time, but I do think there would be an opportunity in the future to have a good project there. And we don't want to live with the wrong one for the rest of our lives. So please do no harm and follow the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malazzo. Next speaker, please.
My name is Joe D'Stazio. I'm a resident of Horton's Creek neighborhood, also a commercial developer in town, regional commercial developer. I'm following Mr. Malazzo's lead here on this site that's in question tonight. While I do think that the developers done a great job in working with the community and planning for this intersection, should the rezoning for the parcel fail this evening or not go through, I would certainly be interested in partnering with that developer on a mixed-use project. I think that area is gone, undergone, a continued evolution with MetLife coming, with Bain Bridge and Highwoods adding 500 residential units there, whereas in the past, there may not have been a desire for commercial there, specifically from grocers, which I specifically work with. I think there would be tremendous amount of interest in addition to the multifamily that's been added here, the additional corporate life that's gone on here, the extension of Marsville, I'm sorry, McCrimmon Parkway from 54 would also add additional traffic by this circumventing the 54 corridor. All these things kind of put together are what garners interest in addition to the demographics that's already there. Very dense from a daytime population, from a nighttime population, highly affluent, highly educated, and of course, high income level. So again, just wanted to kind of echo Mr. Malazzo's sentiments, and should this not go through, I would be welcome to partner on the mixed-use project here, which I think is in great need. I spend a lot of time over there, Carolina Cafe, having meetings in the morning. My daughter runs cross-country in North Cary Park, so I do spend a lot of time out there, and I know that there's a need for another quality, at least grocer, in that area. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our consent agenda. For people that are watching our meeting on TV or online, we'd like to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all consent agenda items on the consent agenda we have. Minutes, 17 ACTO-1 Land Development Ordinance Amendments, Consistency Statement for 17 ACTO-1, Ratification of Resolution First United Methodist Church, and Bid Award for the NC DOT I-5506 Utility Relocation Project. Would any council member like to pull one of these items for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we move to public hearings. Same rule applies for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes to speak instead of three. Our first discussion item, Economic Development Incentive Grant, Trilliant. Director of Special Projects Lana High will present this item, and council may take action. Ms. High.
Good evening, council. This public hearing provides an opportunity for interested persons to present their views regarding an economic development incentive grant from the town of Cary to Trilliant Networks. On April 18th, Governor Cooper announced that Trilliant was moving its global headquarters from Silicon Valley to Cary, where it will make a capital investment of $1.8 million and create 130 jobs with an average salary of at least $105,385. This announcement was the culmination of many months of negotiations with Trilliant, as well as collaboration between the North Carolina Department of Commerce, the North Carolina Economic Development Partnership, North Carolina Community College System, Wake County, Wake County Economic Development, Cary Economic Development, and the Town of Cary. As part of the comprehensive incentive package, the state offered a job development investment grant, or a J dig, up to $1,329,000. Current state statutes require local government participation when J dig projects are in Tier 3 counties, which are the 20 least distressed counties in the state. The Town of Cary has tenderly offered as part of that package and as part of the local government participation, a $19,000 grant. State statutes also require that before any local incentive can be finalized, a public hearing must be held, which is why we're here tonight. Trilliant Networks is a smart grid software and communications company which offers the energy industry an enterprise-wide smart communications platform for connecting the Internet of Things through a secure, standards-based, multi-technology, open-spectrum solution. Trilliant maximizes smart grid and smart city investments and makes operations future-ready. The Imagine Cary Community Plan contemplates the importance of bringing new businesses to the area. Policy 5 in the Work Chapter specifically calls out the need to attract new, high-value businesses to our community. In addition to providing local, high-paying jobs, Trilliant is participating in Cary's Smart Campus Pilot, working with Cary staff to test the use of controllable lighting to provide safe, energy-efficient exterior lighting in the Town Hall courtyard. Under the proposed agreement, the town would make a grant of up to $19,000 to Trilliant. This project is expected to help stimulate the local economy through capital investment and job creation. Their proposed agreement specifies that half of the total grant may be paid upon proof of capital investment comprised primarily of building renovations and business equipment, and that the other half may be paid upon creating the required jobs. There is also a clawback provision should the facility cease operations or fail to maintain This concludes staff presentation, and I'm available for any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. High. We now move to the public hearing. Now's the time for the public hearing for the Economic Development Incentive Grant, Trilliant, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion.
I want to thank the Town of Cary staff, the economic development, and everybody who's been involved with this. I think Trilliant bringing their headquarters to Cary is a great, significant milestone in what we've done, and the partnership that's being created is phenomenal. With that, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the local development incentive agreement with Trilliant and authorize the town manager or deputy manager to execute an agreement substantially like the agreement that such notices takes such actions as agreement contemplates an appropriate $19,000 from the general fund balance to the Economic Development Strategic Fund for this project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. High.
Thank you.
We now move to our second public hearing, 17 REZ 22 Maple Springs Drive rezoning. Senior Planner Deborah Granon will introduce the item. The council will not take action on this item tonight, but it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. It will turn to council at a future date for our action. Ms. Granon.
Thank you. Good evening, council. For your consideration, is a request to rezone approximately 1.1 acre of land located at 4121 Maple Springs Road. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. The existing zoning is a residential 40 designation in Wake County. The property is outside our corporate limits. It's immediately adjacent to residential 12 conditional use, which you may recall was part of a rezoning case which was just approved a few months ago. The applicant is proposing the same zoning designation as the surrounding property, residential 12 conditional use. There is also an annexation petition associated with the request. The site is not impacted by any stream buffers, according to Cary's GIS maps, and field determination of this will be required at the time of development plan review. According to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Master Plan, the site is in close proximity to the American Tobacco Trail, highlighted here to the west of the subject property. And the site is located in close proximity to Green Level West Road and White Oak Church Road, however does not have frontage on either street. There are no transit routes currently existing in the vicinity of the subject property. And according to the Growth Framework Map, the subject property is designated as a suburban neighborhood, which would support the R-12 zoning that's been proposed. The property is also located in the Green Level Special Planning Area and identified as a property that's located west of Flat Branch. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the rezoning request. No one other than the applicant attended the neighborhood meeting, and staff has only had one phone call on this case that was related to whether or not adjacent property would be suitable for similar development. In evaluating this plan, staff is looking at the policies of the Green Level Special Planning Area and questioning whether or not this maintains neighborhood character, provides more housing choices, and supports development and infill in this site. And so far, based on it being identical to the adjacent property, it looks as though it's in complete compliance with the Cary Community Plan. So this concludes staff's presentation, and following the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. Now's the time for the public hearing for 17 REZ 22 Maple Springs Drive rezoning, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Seeing none, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board, probably in a month or two. They'll review it, then it'll come back to council at a later date. Thank you, Ms. Granon.
Thank you.
We now move to our third and last public hearing, 17 REZ 21 Louis Drive Residential rezoning. And Senior Planner Katie Dry will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. The item will return to council at a future date for action. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, council. For your consideration, is a request to rezone 7.99 acres at 6736 and 0 Louis Drive. The site's highlighted here in yellow. It's at the intersection of Louis Drive and NC 55. The site's mostly wooded. It does contain one detached dwelling right up at NC 55. It's adjacent to the Brookstone subdivision, which is to the west. The lots that are adjacent to the site are zoned R-8 conditional use, and they range in lot size between 9,000 and 10,000 square feet. To the north of the site is a daycare. This daycare receives access through the subject site using a 40-foot access easement. You can see the access to the daycare on the eastern side of the site. Across 55 is the Turner Creek Elementary School and the Oaks at Turner Creek Development. South of Louis Drive is undeveloped property that does have one detached dwelling. The site also does not have frontage on Louis Drive. There is actually a 40-foot landscape strip that's owned by the Brookstone Homeowners Association on both sides of Louis Drive. Staff understands that this landscape strip may have been created as a beautification project during NC DOT project to realign Louis Drive with Turner Creek Road across Highway 55. This is a historic aerial, and as you can see, the previous alignment for Louis Drive made a turn, kind of a sharp turn into NC 55, and you can see the current alignment straightened out that turn further. So this is the current alignment for Louis Drive. The site is in Wake County. It's zoned highway district. The site does have an annexation petition, which has already had a public hearing. The applicant's proposing to annex and apply initial Town of Cary zoning of residential multifamily conditional use and watershed protection overlay districts, Jordan Lake Subdistrict. They are proposing to limit the use to townhomes, accessory uses, neighborhood recreation, and set a maximum of 64 dwellings, which equals an approximate density of eight dwellings per acre. Staff has completed a preliminary analysis of the site with the Imagine Cary Community Plan, and aspects for the evaluation include looking at the plan's policies and the site's future growth framework map designation. The development category for this site is traditional neighborhood, which is generally viewed as including moderate amounts of differing housing types, including single-family, detached, patio homes, townhomes, multifamily homes, and master-plan communities. Residential multifamily conditional use, as in this case, may be appropriate for the traditional neighborhood development category, depending on the conditions and the context. The proposal of townhomes as a traditional development type can act as an appropriate form-based and use-based buffer form between the single-family homes to the east and Brookstone and NC 55. Louis Drive is classified as a collector's street in the planned roadway widths map of the Imagine Cary Community Plan and has not been constructed to its future cross-section. And due to the landscape strip, which is owned by the Brookstone Homeowners Association, which separates the subject property from Louis Drive, the frontage improvements to widen Louis Drive cannot be required by the town at the time of this project's development plan. Typically, frontage improvements along a collector's street would include road widening, curb and gutter, bike lanes, and sidewalk. According to the Town of Cary's GIS maps, the site is not impacted by stream buffers. However, field determination of this will occur at the time of development plan review. These arrows indicate the current flow of the water on the site. The larger arrow shows that a majority of the stormwater currently flows to the north. The town does have specific stormwater and floodplain management requirements for new development that must be addressed during the development plan review process to satisfy Cary's land development ordinance. According to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, no park or greenway locations are shown on the site. There is a current Go Cary Transit Route which runs along NC 55. At the neighborhood meeting, which was held here at Town Hall on August 2nd, 2017, there were a few questions and concerns regarding the proposed use, specifically the use of townhomes next to single-family homes. There was also concerns and questions about the loss of trees, what types of trees would have to be protected according to Cary's land development ordinance. There was also some questions about stormwater that was mostly related to some nearby neighborhoods to the south of the site. Properties within 800 feet of the site were notified of the public hearing, and the site was posted with public hearing signs and ads were placed in accordance with the Town of Cary's land development ordinance. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share a justification for the request, and following that, staff will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. At this time, I would invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Lager appear on behalf of the applicant. Katie's done a great job of, as always, of laying out the proposal, and the staff report is spectacular, as the Town of Cary always has, very thorough staff reports. I just want to hit on a couple of highlights. As Katie indicated, this is a rezoning request to permit essentially a townhome development with up to eight units to the acre along Highway 55 at Louis Drive. We believe, and we submitted the case because we believe, when the applicant came to us and said this was a plan that they would like to move forward with, the first thing we did was review the Cary Community Plan. And we believe this satisfies the policies that are applicable to this site. I want to touch on a couple of things associated with that. The first is that with respect to transitions, and I know that one of the things that the Cary Community Plan talks a lot about is transitions, townhomes by their very nature are a transitional use. As you all are aware, Highway 55 carries a lot of traffic. It's a heavily-traveled thoroughfare. That's not changing anytime soon, especially with the continued growth in places like Apex, which is just south of the site. 55 will continue to carry a lot of traffic, and so having a townhome-style use here provides a transitional use between Highway 55 and the adjacent residential community. Also, one of the unique aspects of this site, and I'm going to see if I can slide this over, is actually the location of this access drive that serves the daycare. What that results in is essentially this pie-shaped piece of property that's rendered unusable for purposes of a townhome development, or really any development. It's not wide enough to really do anything with, you wouldn't be able to front any units on it. So for all intents and purposes, while it's not like a stream buffer, you know, a lot of times you see a site and you've got some natural buffers that have been created around it as a result of Mother Earth, these are man-made buffers that have been created by virtue of locating the access drive in a somewhat peculiar place, but at the end of the day, it creates almost a natural buffer between this site and the adjacent residences to it. So we believe that from a use standpoint, from a form standpoint, as well as from just kind of the configuration of the site and the existing improvements on the site, we believe this is an appropriate transition from the heavily-traveled 55 thoroughfare over to the single-family neighborhood. Also, want to talk briefly about transportation and traffic. This is just 64 townhomes proposed for this site. As is noted in the staff report, that generates 36 AM peak-hour trips and 42 PM peak-hour trips. So it was far below the town's threshold for a traffic impact analysis for the rezoning, and it's a low-traffic generator. Townhomes by their very nature are a low-traffic generator compared to single-family residential, and the AM and PM trips show that is the case. The last point I want to make, and Katie was talking about this kind of highlighted section of the slide, that's property that we don't own. That is property that's owned by the Brookstone HOA. I think when it was, I don't know if it was part of the widening project, or maybe when Brookstone was platted, they have a sign, the Brookstone community has a sign up along 55 adjacent to Louis Drive, so I don't know if that was the intent behind it. But at any rate, we don't own that property. We don't control that property. So even if we wanted to make improvements along Louis Drive, that's just not something we have the ability to control because it's a third party. So with that, again, we believe this satisfies and meets the policy recommendations of the Cary Community Plan. We believe it's an appropriate transition, and we look forward to continuing to work with the town through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Now's the time for public hearing for rezoning 17 REZ 21 Louis Drive Residential, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this rezoning?
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council for allowing me to speak today. I am a homeowner.
Could you give us your name, please?
My name is David Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
I'm a homeowner in the Brookstone subdivision. As a matter of As a matter of fact, I live on the corner of Louis Drive and Friar Creek, which is a corner lot with a stop sign. Our subdivision is one of the key flow-through subdivisions for people who want to access 55 from beyond our subdivision. And because of that, there is a lot of traffic that comes right through our neighborhood. And my fear is that if you allow 64 townhomes, that's going to equal approximately 100 to 150 cars coming through this neighborhood. And that's already added to the increased cars that are coming through that neighborhood right now. I've lived in the subdivision for 10 years and I've seen a lot of change. And I watch a lot of cars come through my stop sign and just roll right through it. I've cut the grass in my yard and almost been hit by a car. And I'm frightened of the fact that with the 64 townhomes, that that number is just too large. I can understand a lower threshold of even half of that and make the townhome area a nice area. I'm not one of those guys that say, hey, now that I'm in Cary, no one else can come. I just want it to be done smart and be done wise. I think that that area is and would really help all of us if those townhomes were built and were built correctly and built wise for the flow of the community. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and I thank you very much for hearing me. And please, I know you guys are going to do the right thing, but from a homeowner, from my point of view, please, just do it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Other speakers for this public hearing? Anyone else? And while this speaker's coming down, I would ask that speakers for public hearings, please take a seat into the rows that are to my right. And that way you can get down there quicker and we could have a more efficient meeting. Thank you, sir.
My name is Chris Gabrielson. I am also a resident of Brookstone. I was a little surprised to see that we were about to put in 64 townhomes here. Again, as the previous gentleman mentioned, not just for a traffic concern, but also just the neighborhood overall. As you drive through, you know, you have a lot of large, single-family homes. The recent development that went in across Highway 55 is also single detached homes. A lot of the communities, similar flow. I did look at the planning for the zoning within the Cary guidelines. And I realized that townhomes are within the possibility of this zoning. But I really don't feel it's going to flow with the local community. You know, there is the school there. There is a lot of children that I know like to play in that road. I live on one of the cul-de-sacs there. You know, it's a concern for me just having that level of density. Also, I know eventually there is a large lot just to the right of where it says site. Eventually, I'd assume that's also going to be developed. I would hate to see another group of 60-plus townhomes go in there and further put a burden on really our one ingress and egress street. So that's really my main concern is just the density. I don't really have a problem with the townhomes themselves. I just feel 64 is a bit much. I'd prefer single-family homes detached, matching the rest of the community. But that's really, you know, it's my opinion. And I realize they're within their right to ask for that. I would just ask that we maybe ease up on it a bit. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this rezoning?
Hi. My name is Matt Slavis. I live at 6629 Louis Drive. I'm also the vice president of the Brookstone Homeowners Association, so I represent them tonight. The gentleman that was up here and put up the slide of the property along Louis Drive that he states that the Brookstone Homeowners Association owns, I think he mentioned that he didn't have the ability to upgrade that land. Well, if you're going to add 700 cars a day to that intersection, that road should be updated. Louis Drive today is designated as a collector by the Town of Cary. However, from Joseph Pond Road to 55, the road's not finished. There's no shoulder or sidewalk, and the road actually narrows as you come from Joseph Pond to 55. I've actually seen an accident where cars collided from coming too close as the road narrows. So if the developer has already stated that they cannot finish the road or pay for that improvement, then who would? Now, the homeowners of Brookstone can't afford to pay for that. And if the road's not going to be finished, then who pays? Now, to compound that problem, the land on those two strips is also not part of the Town of Cary. It's, I think county land. I've contacted members of the town previously. And the responsibility for that land is the state. So it seems to be you've got a quagmire of responsibility for the land where the entrance to the subdivision will be built. And I'd ask that that be resolved before we approve any zoning changes that are going to affect traffic. Also, 64 townhomes seems a bit dense for that parcel of land at nine acres. On the other side of 55, a similar parcel of 13 acres was zoned for 64 homes and ultimately wasn't built at that level. There were fewer homes built. It still, it doesn't match the character of the neighborhood we have now. Brookstone's probably a 25-year-old division. The lots are larger than other newer subdivisions in Cary. And I think it just doesn't fit with the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this rezoning?
Hello, council. My name is Jason Tucker. I live at 111 Joseph Pond Lane, which is a home that is directly adjacent to the property in question. And I would like to voice some concern. Really kind of echoing a lot of what I'm hearing so far and what I've also heard from my neighbors in previous hearings regarding this space, which is the traffic. So I know that that was discussed as far as that space is not under the control of the current owner and the development. However, I would like to understand a little bit further as far as what can be done about that. It is a very restricted space. It is also a blind turn. So it narrows, it's unmarked, it doesn't have shoulders, doesn't have sidewalks, and it's also wide. And the access road, which goes to the daycare currently, is also a very small road, but that goes directly behind all of our homes. If that is used as a primary access road for 64 homes, that traffic density would be very significant, which is also one of my primary concerns for this. So I'd like to make sure that that's under consideration when this is discussed. I think that 64, it may or may not be a high number. It does sound a little bit high to me, but I have a difficulty visualizing that, to be honest. But I'd just like to make sure that that number of cars is under consideration for the space and directly behind the homes that are currently present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Next speaker for this rezoning? Anyone else for this rezoning? Last call. Seeing no one will close the public hearing. Before it goes to the Planning and Zoning Board, I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions. I do know that the gentleman that just asked about questions, Mr. Tucker, asked about questions about the road and what can be done. That is a staff question. Could somebody talk with him and let him know the plans and who's responsible and who's paying for it and that kind of stuff? And then the other comments and questions, I would ask that this group meet with the applicant. Jason Barron works with many projects with the town. He's very open to meeting with residents and anyone else in the projects he represents. I think that would be very useful. And if anything changes between tonight and the time it goes to the Planning and Zoning Board, there will be another public hearing that will allow you to speak on those changes. So one, I would ask that you meet with the applicant if you can. And two, if there are any changes, then you can speak to those changes. And of course, if you have any questions, Mrs. Dry or anyone else will be glad to help you with answers to those questions. Ms. Robinson?
May I follow up on that?
Please.
So I think it would be helpful for us, particularly the legal department and the engineering department and the planning staff, to explain to us how we got to the point where we have now. I imagine what happened is they needed a westbound egress out of the neighborhood. So the owners allowed that land to be used for the egress. And they said, oh, well, we'll give you this amount of land. I'm not sure why, when it was built, they didn't have to adhere to our town standards with curb and gutter and sidewalk. That would have resolved the problem immediately if that had been done. So the first question is, how did we get to the point where we are now? And then what steps can we take, and by we, I really mean the HOA board and the applicant and the owner of the land, to arrange to have whatever needs to be done so that this land is updated properly? Because the state's not going to do it. The overall taxpayers for the town shouldn't be doing this. By every effect, this is a road that feeds to Brookstone and to this new development. And had there not been some kind of arrangement done in the past that waived the right to have that sidewalk and curb and gutter there, then the applicant would be building it now if they hadn't put that little buffer road in there. So if it means the HOA has to sell it or consign it over to the owner and then the owner takes it in, I mean, I think that needs to be resolved in some way so that we don't have this perpetual problem with that. The question I have for staff, too, that you could just send us an email, let us know, that little access road, is that going to be updated to our road standards? I mean, it's not going to stay an access road, right? They'll put curb and gutter and a sidewalk on there as we require it or not because this will be private streets for a townhome community?
I'm going to let a representative from Transportation Facilities talk a little bit further about that.
Okay.
Ken Dunn, Transportation Facilities, good evening. We need to bring that up to at least our private street standard or to local street standard, which would include curb and gutter and sidewalk along at least one side.
Okay. And then what about along?
Do you mind?
Yeah.
Just piggyback on that. Would we know that before the rezoning or not?
It would be part of the standard that we'd cover at site plan. So, yeah, we'd...
So we wouldn't know if it's going to continue to be a private road? Or it would be a private road standards or town standards, just so they understand the answer to that?
I think to build, they've got to bring it up to standard. So, yeah, it can be resolved, but they've got to...
We wouldn't know.
Yeah, it's a...
Will we be happy with either, whether it's our pri... Will we be happy with either private road standard or town standard, right? Because if private road standard is like what it looks like now, I mean, that's what I'm asking. Is it what it looks like now or is it going to be something better?
We have a standard for private streets that would bring it up to having curb and gutter and sidewalk on one side.
And sidewalk on one side.
Yeah, that's worst-case scenario if it's a private street.
And as you've heard us before, because we're now the Jen and Lori Show. So we've been contacted by a ton of citizens who are stuck with private roads, right? And the maintenance of those and the update of those. And they're not happy because when they bought their home, they didn't realize that it was a private road that they had to pay for. So my question about the private road is, is there some sort of sign-off that someone who buys the townhomes so that they realize it's a private road that they have to be associated with? Or does the daycare have to take care of it? All of the machinations around that, what does that look like?
So generally, when a site plan comes in that has private roads, we have a statement that we ask to be placed on plan that spells out that these are private streets and what that means. And we also ask for that to be in the...
Covenants?
I believe in the covenants, but definitely in the advertisements and any of their marketing material, is the word I'm looking for.
I think MLS has to say it, but let me ask a question about this. What percentage of our townhome communities end up coming in with private street versus public streets?
I don't, I...
Yeah.
We'll get you that answer. Yeah, so I don't want to speculate or someone else will speculate.
If you could let us know, because the just general concern I have, I'm happy with townhomes. I do think they're a good transition. I'm always a little bit worried when we try to pack on too many townhomes into a community. And if that trips it so that they go to private streets versus public streets, I think that's an indicator that they're probably putting too many in there. Because private streets, they end up with like the T-stubs and some kind of weird stuff, you know, that never looks the same at the same high standard.
Yeah, and the standards are a little bit different between our...
Will be. Okay, that's very good. I will say, and this is not necessarily an engineering thing or a sidewalk thing. In general, the one reservation I have about this is that this is right up along Highway 55. If this community does not provide a place for children to play, then they have nowhere to play. And because this is not where they can just, you know, tootle out and walk along Highway 55 all day long for fun and throw a football along there. So that's going to be a pretty big concern of mine. And I don't know where Jason is. I'm kind of looking out. There he is. Hey, Jason, that's going to be my concern going forward. So make sure those densities are going to allow for there to be ample space. And I'll be scrutinizing that fairly carefully.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I mean, the one question I have is, you know, Lori, you brought up about private roads. This has been going on for a while and they may not know, but most of them have signed agreements that they did read it. So, I mean, we're caught in that conundrum. But it was my understanding that years ago, we were going to get away completely with private roads and that we were going to solve this problem for the future, that we have no more private roads. So I'm actually kind of stunned tonight to hear that we have a double standard again. Why are we even allowing private roads? That's a problem we were trying to fix for many years. So I'd like to know the history of that because, you know, there's a problem with age, but you know, you start forgetting. But it was clear to me that our direction years ago, when we had these problems surfacing, you know, they usually happen around 25 years in Lockmere and other places where you have these subdivisions, that we were just going to solve that problem by no longer allowing private road standards. So I'm a little taken back about that and...
We don't blame you because you were here.
Well, if I could, and I don't know the history of this issue, but obviously I'll find out. I can tell you that in my experience, you do want to avoid private roads at all costs because you could have people sign in blood and they still, when they sell it two or three times later, because streets last a long time. And so especially in a townhouse where there's that much turnover, the expectation, citizens believe that streets are owned by municipalities. And by and large, they are. Again, not Cary experience so much, and we'll get to that. But typically, where you do see them, it's limited now more often to townhome developments where due to the configuration of the development, it's difficult to provide services. You might need specialized equipment, a turning radius, et cetera. But it sounds like these are going to be built to Cary standards. But I can tell you that if it wasn't your preference, I would suggest that you try to have public streets as much as possible. And in the event that there is a project that it makes more sense for there to be private, that the standard for that should be high and should be explained to you in great detail. So we'll do that here.
Is there any state law that prevents us from mandating that all roads in communities be built as public roads?
I'm not, I mean, not that I'm...
We can certainly look at that. I'm not a world... Yeah, if you don't mind getting back to us, because this is something that we've talked about a lot of. And I kind of agree with Jack. I thought we pretty much put this to rest a while ago. So to help us understand that, and if you don't mind, give us a map and show us which communities have private streets so that we just know this.
Yeah, the first snowfall, I guarantee you, we plow that neighborhood and say, we're not doing yours. You're a private road. They're going to scream bloody murder.
Well, I experienced, I think, would also tell all of us that policy positions without any exceptions aren't tenable either. So no more private streets, that will never work, you know, thinking in the long view, 10, 20, 30 years. But having the standard for when they would be allowed certainly could be a very high one. So I would just always recommend to give yourself some wiggle room on any policy.
Two more questions. Mr. Dry, you said that there were no greenways currently. Are there any planned anywhere in this area? I was kind of surprised to hear that considering we have all these residential...
Yes, there's one just to the north and, sorry, when I was speaking, I meant no greenways on the actual subject.
Okay, okay. And one other point, if you could bring up the map you had before. One of the concerns, obviously, that we've had is the safe egress and ingress of kids who want to walk and go to Turner Creek Elementary School. And obviously, this is a highway. Is there any safe mechanism for them to get there besides crossing at grade at that location?
I wouldn't let my kids do it, that's for sure.
Was there any planned? Are there any culverts? Are there any greenway crossings? Are there any greenway crossings? I know there's a, where you had the greenway picture, is that at grade up at, is that at High House or where, where was that?
There's a, there's a grade separated one to the north of this.
Is it a tunnel?
It's a tunnel.
It is a tunnel. So, it, but it's, is it that one?
It's where the green is right there. Yeah, that's a tunnel.
Okay.
But you wouldn't go all the way down there, cross and come all the way back.
I mean, I, just being proactive about looking further to that, that's another issue. I, I actually, as, as this goes through the process, you know, I, transitional, conditional use along the highway is, you know, is a good fit, I think. I think there's an opportunity as well for the Brookstone neighbors to connect with this landowner and developer to find an amenable solution for improving that road, right? There is something that maybe they can work on together and find out. I, I know that there's property, it's in their name. It might not be annexed. That might slow the process down in fact, if annexations have to occur. But I'd like to see this whole thing come in and not done piecemeal and, you know, the townhomes are there and the roads not improved. I'd rather see it slow down and get the whole thing because that, the gentleman is absolutely right. When you drive into Louis Drive, it doesn't, it doesn't match the community behind it. It really doesn't. And I think that should be, be fixed before this is approved personally.
And to follow up on that, sorry, Ms. Yerha, and we're going to see this in another decision we have tonight. When we start doing these infill projects where we have vacant lands north, south, you're setting, I think, precedence of how you want the look and feel of that corridor to be. And I hope that is a part of the consideration by our Planning and Zoning Board, that that is discussed, whether they think multifamily, if it continued north and south here would be a good idea or not. And if they think it's a good transitional, not only from east to west, but north, south, I want to hear that conversation. Ms. Yerha?
No, certainly that landscape easement and the funky little road that goes up to the daycare are two things that make this really interesting. And I think we do need to find out more information about the landscape easement and who's responsible and how, what we can do. And working together, you took the words out of my mouth there, may be the answer to this, the homeowners association. But a reminder, maybe it's just a technical point, the access, and we're talking about private roads, public, access points have, they're not included in this rezoning, right? It's not in front, we're assuming that road is going to be the access point. We don't technically know that. So, I, I think as soon as, you know, if we get more information about the landscape easement, I think more information or more advice from the applicant might be helpful also as this moves through the process, as to where they intend to put the access points. Because technically, what we're looking at now has only indirect bearing on, on what we've been discussing.
Other question, Ms. George?
Oh, every question that has been asked except one that I had. And what that was, I heard Mr. Barron say that, that ax is a natural buffer, which made me assume that they don't leave the road because he said ax is a buffer. He can't, he can't put lots to the east of it. But is that, is that the same thing as saying, we will leave that buffer to the east and leave those trees and leave it that way? Or was that just an observation? And I, I didn't, I kind of heard of, I just, that's a question I've got because it just, it was kind of hanging out there. And so, I think it's very unclear.
Is it zoning, is it a zoning condition or is it just a state?
It was a statement that they can't build there, but then they figure out a way later that they can. That's what I don't know. So, that's my question.
As a, just a quick point of clarification, there will be a buffer required between this site and the adjacent single-family homes. And the buffer between townhomes and single families, 40 foot. So, staff would be also evaluating to make sure that that 40-foot opaque buffer is installed at the time of development plan review. And whether that happens on, on both sides of the road or one side of the road, that would have to be met.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Can you tell us how far they have to stay off of Highway 55?
There would be a 50-foot opaque streetscape requirement.
Okay, does that, does that get added into their gross yield? Like, when they say they want 64 units and that averages to eight units per acre, does that include that 50-foot buffer land?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so, so people should not presume that they're getting eighth of an acre because it's going to be even smaller than that because it would be like you take out for that buffer and the other buffer and any kind of roadways and the little mailbox kiosk area. So, the density is going to be more than eight units per acre on the buildable portion.
Yeah, they, they look at the, the entire, the entire site. That's right.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Just a comment. I don't really have a problem with the use. I think it's a good transition from 55 into the single family. I think there's been plenty of comments made that identify some concerns that I think with a little due diligence by all parties involved can probably be worked through and come to resolution, so.
Okay, very good.
I admire your optimism.
This, as I said earlier, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. Any changes between now and then, we'll trigger another public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item, 17 RE06 Kerry Town Center, Senior Planner Deborah Grannan will give a report. We're going to hear the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation and council may take action this evening. This item will require a simple majority vote to approve. Ms. Grannan?
Thank you. Hello again. This is a request to rezone a portion of the Kerry Town Center Mall located at 1105 Walnut Street on approximately 20 acres. The site is highlighted in yellow. It's adjacent to the Ivy Meadows subdivision and south of the Triangle Aquatic Center. As you may recall, when this was first presented, we gave you a little history of the Kerry Town Center Mall. It opened in 1979 with simply 325,000 square feet of retail use. Over the years, it grew and it flourished. In the 1990s, it was up to 1.1 million square feet and then things started to change. The Seers closed in 2015. The Macy's closed in 2016. And many days, you can see the parking lot of the mall looking just like it looks here. So, it's not been flourishing recently. The existing zoning is general commercial conditional use. There's a number of conditions that were placed on the property. One included not to exceed the two-story height limit of the Hudson Belk store, which was existing on the mall. Additional conditions were added in 1987 and 1990 that included adding a 250-foot building setback adjacent to Ivy Meadows, providing a buffer adjacent to that residential neighborhood. There were other detailed site design standards and inclusion of a preservation of a large red oak tree on the subject property, which did not survive some of the redevelopment. We did not have critical root zone conditions back then. One of the most important conditions to the neighbors was the buffer and the fence adjacent to the Ivy Meadows neighborhood. This is a recent photograph that shows that the landscaping is doing well in that area and does create a buffer from activity at the mall. So, what's changed since 1990? The town of Kerry spent over four years developing the Imagine Kerry Kerry Community Plan. And with that came new opportunities to look at this site. The property is located within a special planning area, the Eastern Kerry Gateway. And it is designated for mixed-use commercial, which creates all sorts of opportunity, not the least of which is the opportunity to look at revitalization for the Kerry Town Center Mall and create a more vibrant lifestyle center. So, the proposed zoning is Mixed Use District, MXD. And with that zoning category comes the requirement to submit a preliminary development plan, which the applicant has done. It includes a 380,000-square-foot retail building, a parking deck, structured parking deck in between the retail building and Convention Drive, and then a surface parking area not to exceed 200 spaces. Buffers are provided and community gathering space is provided adjacent to the residential or retail building. The applicant's proposal includes specific site design standards for sidewalks, streetscapes, light poles, building architecture, flags and flagpoles, and signage. This is a prototypical design of what you might expect the facade to be substantially similar to. The applicant is seeking reductions to Kerry architectural design standards in regard to building materials and masonry materials. They are not seeking any reductions to the color, interestingly enough. I think it's worth noting that we don't have standards that restrict them from using these colors. But the fact that this is not a masonry building is part of the reason why they've had to go through this mixed-use design process. They've also asked for their own unique standards for signage. And this shows you an example of the type of signage on the building facade which is proposed. This would exceed Kerry's LDO standards by approximately 50 percent. They've also asked for an increase in the height to flagpoles by 10 feet. And they've sought a request to have their standard signature flag circles on the site, which according to Kerry's Land Development Ordinance would not be allowed unless you had a single-tenant site and such features were not visible from off-site. So, as far as community feedback on this request, I think we've all heard feedback on this request. There was a neighborhood meeting back in March of 2017. Review of the Kerry design standards was discussed and citizens wanted to know what was coming and when. And then, at the public hearing in September, there were many people who voiced support for the proposed use. And there were also concerns raised about traffic, sight lighting and noise. The council commented with general support, but an important question came up. How does this fit with a mixed-use center? Is this a walkable mixed-use? And there was a question from Mr. Smith about the buffer standards. Well, in terms of walkability and mixed-use, a lot of people referred to what was closest to home, and that's the Charlotte Ikea, where you've got vast surface parking and a somewhat isolated use. So, that really did not meet Kerry's design standards for a walkable mixed-use center. Staff looked at some other locations, White Marsh, Maryland, very limited pedestrian connectivity between tenants on the site. Kerry is unique. They're asking for reduced parking. They're asking to lessen the parking impacts with their proposed development. They have an existing significant buffer adjacent to the Ivy Meadows neighborhood, which is proposed to be preserved. They're located internally to a site, so they don't have frontage on a major thoroughfare or collector road. And they are immediately adjacent to Phase Two of the Kerry Town Center Mall, which is in review. And that's creating a whole new series of opportunities for park once, visit more than one site at a time, walk from one use to another. So, the opportunity that exists here is unlike what we've seen in other locations where this type of tenant has been proposed and is existing. Since you saw this last, the applicant did come back to strengthen some of the zoning conditions and make sure that it was clear that the fence that's currently in place between this site and the Ivy Meadows neighborhood would be maintained and preserved. And if there's any gaps in the landscaping, it would be supplemented or replaced. In response to some additional concerns that were raised by a council member, there was concern about softening the impact of the visual design of the building and whether or not there would be any landscape plantings. The applicant did look at this request. Staff looked at this. We saw that in many locations, they did not have the same foundation plantings that we have in Kerry. So, we brought this to the applicant's attention. And the previous request for a modification to reduce foundation plantings to 20 percent along non-service areas of the building has been eliminated. So, the applicant has now agreed that they would comply with Kerry's standards for foundation plantings. The applicant has also removed a previous request to increase the height of the parking lot lights. So, they would be meeting the standards with that. They are seeking a reduction to the parking. We've discussed this. Staff did not see an issue with this. We recognize that Kerry standards for parking are high and that there are opportunities, especially in a mixed-use development, to look at shared parking opportunities. They're seeking a 10-foot wide streetscape along Convention Drive, reduction of spacing between travel lanes. Overhead utility lines are proposed to remain above ground. And this is where those off-site road improvements are being proposed. And then sidewalk on just one side of Convention Drive. Some of the Planning and Zoning Board members also had some questions about what was proposed. And one of the big concerns is whether or not this site could support the traffic that would come. Staff has discussed this with our Transportation and Facilities Department and with our Police Department. And we do anticipate that with a user like this, there is going to be traffic, especially in the beginning. But we'd like to note that the roads have been designed in this area in anticipation of growth and more activity. So, the subject property is already located in close proximity to an existing thoroughfare. There are future plans for a collector road going north and south and then through the Eastern Kerry Gateway site as well. So, there is anticipation that this area will be able to support growth. But yes, we do recognize that any successful user is going to generate traffic. So, in analyzing the Kerry Community Plan, staff looked at whether or not this would foster development of a compact mixed-use and high-density destination center. And based on the location of the future mall redevelopment, we felt that this did meet those standards. This would help to grow a sustainable and diversified workforce and would enhance locational appeal to businesses and workers. And probably one of the most important concerns and issues is that this would facilitate redevelopment of an underperforming commercial center. So, staff's recommendation was for approval. And this recommendation was shared by the Planning and Zoning Board. At this time, I'd like to ask the Board Chair, Mr. Evangelista, to speak to the Board's comments on this.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, it's a six-nothing vote, so we were unanimous. But there were some concerns, but those concerns we felt were, were properly addressed. First of all, you heard about traffic. One of the things that really struck us was all the mitigations that have been offered by the applicant that were identified in the traffic study. That's something we don't normally see. We see a whole bunch of mitigations required and maybe one or two thrown out. I think all but one or two were, were offered up this time. So, that was great. We really, really appreciated that. There was some bit of a concern that the roles were reversed a little. Typically, when someone from a commercial bent franchise-type business wants to come in here and they have a signature look, signature signage, that runs afoul of what we design as, as standards for signs or anything else, we, we pretty much stand firm and say, hey, you want to come here, you got to look the way we want you to look. There was a little bit of a concern where it was flipped this time, where it's, you want your mall saved? Get ready for blue and yellow. And so, we were a little concerned about that. But honestly, the more you look at the different mitigations offered, the more you see the zoning conditions that were changed and, and Deborah mentioned too, I think, that were changed since we saw it. We were really more in, in an environment where we both were making reasonable concessions. And this is a unique situation, as you heard before. This is an area that we really want to see some commercial development go. And, and we had other cases come through for this area that, that perhaps might have been more of a trade-off. So, all in all, we were pretty content with what we saw coming in from the, from the applicant. And, and since there have been some changes since then, we would even be more so had we seen those come here. So, have, have you any questions on that? Any questions for Mr. Evangelista? Thank you, sir. Ms. Grannan, have you completed your report? Okay, very good. Councilmembers, open it up to questions, comments?
The, the one comment that, about the appearance, what staff did note is it's not on a major road. It's set. So, the, whatever you call it, the view shed or the eye, you know, the eye appeal, it's really interesting on this one, where since it's set in the center and you have the buffers around it, I think we're really preserving the integrity of our look just by the location of it. So, you know, I think Mr. Evangelista said it best, there's a lot of mitigation here. But in the end, looks like these are the kind of things that make this a worthwhile project. So, I'm pretty excited about it and what I'm hearing from most of the citizens in the area, they are too.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments, questions?
I'm just saying, you know, I raised the concern about the, the plantings. I had several concerns about how well this would integrate into a mixed-use project because what I didn't want us to do is to make the presumption that it would fit in and then anything that followed would be shoehorned and it just wouldn't be very compatible. I wish that IKEA had made more concessions to really, to really promote a walkable, pedestrian-friendly and pedestrian-scale project for the site since the developer as a whole for the, for the enti- pedestrian-scale project for the site, since the developer as a whole, for the entire mall, says that this is going to be a mixed-use, walkable community. But, you know, we're weighing the opportunity to have this economic generator versus our standards, and I was very happy that they came back and removed their request for the reduction in plantings. I think plantings are very important. I think it'll help improve the site. It'd be nice if they had some shade trees stuck in there, in my opinion. But I'd like to see, I'm happy to see that they're going to at least put the plantings in. It's with reluctance that I vote for this. I'm not an overwhelming fan of this project. And if they had come in and shown that they wanted to modify their building to fit in with some of the standards that we have in Cary, particularly that side that was facing the other part of the mixed-use project, I would have been much more gung-ho. But with reluctance, I'm going to vote for it, and I hope that I am completely wrong on all of the things that I've thought about this project, because I want it to be a success.
One thing I would add to the comments you made, I thought it was very impressive. I think they counted noses by talking to all of us, and the fact that they came back and made changes at the last minute says they want to be a good corporate citizen, and I think that's very important to me, to see that. So I'm thinking they have great intentions and want to create a mixed-use, and they're going to have competition. And so that's another motivating factor for them. To the north will be a big motivating factor. Other questions, comments?
I think it's the most beautiful blue and yellow building I've ever seen.
[laughing]
And I look forward to it coming to Cary. But I will echo some of the comments, especially the ones from you, Mayor, about their efforts to be a good corporate citizen. And Ms. Robinson, as always, you've had a hand in making a good project a little bit better. So appreciate that. But I'm excited. The community is excited. Looking forward to what this is going to do to help revitalize the Eastern Cary Gateway Area, Cary Town Center, the state property across the street, and just that whole side of town. I mean, great things are coming. It's good to be Cary.
Any other comments, questions?
The neighbors, at one point, had asked about their access. I know Champion Drive connects. There's no additional access to the mall. That fence runs the whole length along Convention Center Drive. So right now, the way the neighbors will get there is either out to Walnut Street or down to Champion on the backside and come in by the Aquatic Center.
That does not connect currently, Champion Drive?
Not dropped for pedestrians.
Oh, pedestrian, right. I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, modal, the Aquatic Center, okay. And I think it's a beautiful blue and yellow as well. But we witnessed what the blue and yellow looked like when we went to Atlanta, and the paint job was awful, and it streaked. And I just hope it has a Cary paint job. I just, I was, we looked at it, I believe John looked at it with us, right, John? And it was awful. The first thing that caught our eye was how awful. I took pictures of the lousy paint job. So they got to keep it painted pretty. It's got to look like that. It can't look streaked.
Other comments?
Go ahead.
I really am thankful for the applicant coming back with the plantings. I'd like to reiterate that. I do, bringing up what Mr. George said, we did hear from neighbors on both sides. Some neighbors did want the, because there is a trail. There are people who walk that, right? It's called "designed by users," right? And the "designed by users" is that there's a walkable trail. Half of the neighbors wanted it, and the other half didn't. So at this point, I think that the applicant did the right thing in saying, okay, we'll just, you know, just wait. You don't overwhelmingly want it. We won't put that pedestrian in there. We'll see what user design creates. So I am thankful that the applicant listened to that. And I actually think that this is a great step forward to what the rest of the mall can be and will be. And so, you know how it is, if you build it, they will come, and people will come. There's a gathering space. I'd like to see that this is the seed of what the rest of this great space can be. We've seen a lot of buildings taken down. The Regazzis was taken down, several other buildings. So it's a clean slate for them to start over, and I wish them all the best.
Mr. Yerha? [inaudible]
As a rule, I'm not usually a fan of a rezoning that comes in with 10 or 12 development standards that deviate from our norm. But rules are made to be broken. And I am a fan of a large, unique economic development opportunity that comes along very rarely, such as this one. And I'm a big fan of Cary Town Center Mall, and I've hated to see it deteriorate over recent years. And I think this is a great first step. Actually, it's a first leap, I guess you could call it, toward its rejuvenation. I think it's wonderful. And I am a fan of any rezoning that has the overwhelming support of so many citizens. Not unanimous. We've heard from some on the other side of the coin. But the support is overwhelming, and I think that really goes a long way toward my support. So that means I'm a fan of this rezoning, and I'm gladly going to support it.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
What was the motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
And second, and discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's unanimously.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Granton. Now we have the consistency statement, which is also associated with this rezoning. And is there questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consistency statement.
And it's option A.
Option A.
Second.
There's a motion to approve Option A, consistency statement. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's unanimous. Thank you. All right, we move to our third discussion item. It's 17REZ20, Piney Plains rezoning. Senior Planner Katie Dry will give a report. We're going to hear from our Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation, and council may take action. Simple majority approves this item. Ms. Dry?
For your consideration, it's a request to rezone two properties consisting of approximately 4.7 acres at 2410 and 2416 Piney Plains Road. The site is highlighted here in yellow. It includes two properties. It's adjacent to the Wellington Place subdivision, which is to the west, and across Piney Plains Road is the Lodge at Crossroads apartment complex. The site is located just to the north of Tryon Road, and both properties have roof frontage along Piney Plains Road. The current zoning for the property is residential 40, is within the Watershed Protection Overlay District, and the applicant's requesting to rezone the property to transitional residential conditional use. This zoning change would keep the land use as residential, but would allow an increase in density of up to six units per acre. The applicant's proposing following conditions on the site to limit the use to semi-detached, attached dwellings, townhomes, neighborhood recreation. They're proposing to double the community gathering space to 1,200 square feet. Staff has evaluated the rezoning with the Imagine Cary Community Plan. A review included looking at the plan's policies and the site's future growth framework map designation. An analysis of the site has found that policies that were applicable came from the Live and the Shape chapters. The applicant's proposing TRCU zoning to allow for the development of semi-detached, attached dwellings or townhomes. With the product type being proposed, the request would add a new housing type to the area, which consists primarily of single-family homes to the west, to the north, and to the south, and multifamily homes to the east. Regarding the infill and redevelopment policies, the site is partially ringed by existing subdivisions, individual large-lot detached dwellings, and multifamily apartments. The development may serve as a transition between the single-family homes to the west and the apartments to the east. The development category for the subject property is traditional neighborhood. The traditional neighborhood area is generally viewed as including moderate amounts of differing housing types, including single-family detached, patio homes, townhomes, multifamily housing, and masterclean communities. Transitional residential conditional use, as in this case, can be appropriate, given the type of conditions that are offered. So staff's recommendation for this case is for approval. The rezoning was found by staff to be consistent with the policies of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. The subject site is designated as part of traditional neighborhood on the future growth framework map. And the proposed use of semi-detached, attached dwellings and/or townhomes and neighborhood recreation are appropriate land uses, given the location, the context, and the proposed conditions. The Planning and Zoning Board provided a recommendation on this case for approval on September 25, and Board Chair Mark Evangelista is here to share a summary of the discussion.
So in this case, it was 5 to 1. And as you heard, for the same reasons essentially that staff recommended approval, we saw the advantages to it. A good transition between what we have in multifamily and single-family in those areas, and it's a rather small footprint. It also adds just another diverse type of housing to that area, even though there is some of the same type not too far away. The 1 against vote was essentially something we're going to see more and more as we go on with these infills, and it was, this is a piecemeal rezoning. It's one set of two lots. There's surrounding lots that eventually are going to come to us. Why don't we just wait until they all show up and then handle it as one larger project? And that person who voted in dissent also said it wasn't very interesting, and I'll just leave that at that.
Any questions for Mr. Evangelista? Thank you, sir.
This concludes staff's presentation.
Could you move the slide to the biggest top-down view? I think it was like the third one you had. Thank you. That's perfect. I'll begin comments, because I'm the one that'll probably have issue with this. I don't know if any of my colleagues will. The issue I have is the use around here. I, first of all, thought of the entire area. I heard it mentioned a couple of times. It is a new housing type. Well, just in that particular area, the area is saturated with multifamily. And so really, it is not a new housing type. It's either retail or multifamily throughout that area. And if you remember, we rejected a multifamily between Tryon and, wait a minute, I'm lost in my place, between Tryon and Walnut, I think it's there somewhere. Tryon and, yeah, Walnut. There's townhomes that existed that didn't want other townhomes, and it had a mix of use with retail and townhomes. My point is, too much of one type of use gives me a lot of concern. We see a little bit of that on Harrison Avenue as we approach Maynard. A lot of multifamily there, not a lot of imagination. And I feel that it's going to change the feel that goes along Piney Plains Road. This is the first of two lots of that entire stretch from Tryon Road to Stevens Road. And I suspect when, I think the term is age-out, when these residents age out, that these will also become multifamily, and how does that feel? As a person who drives Piney Plains probably 10 times a day, I can tell you, the speed limit's 45. The average speed's probably 55 to 60. One thing I would like to see, if this is approved, and I think it will be, is we consider putting a median on Piney Plains Road. I think that would help tremendously with the feel of the area. As far as the use goes, in isolation on that area of Piney Plains, I don't have a lot of heartburn with it. I think the transition's fine, but it's just the region and the area that really concerns me and the feel of Piney Plains Road. So as a person who lives less than a mile from there, I can tell you, I have a lot of feel for that road, and I know exactly what goes on in that area. Mr. Smith, you live close there, too?
Yeah, probably a quarter of a mile closer than you. There's an irony to your observations, because in looking at it, I had exactly the opposite, okay? What I saw was a well-thought-out plan with a lot of pressure to not develop and wait so they could come in with a, as Mark was saying, the P and Z, come in with much more density. That would be, in my opinion, a disaster for that area, for all those concerns you had. What I felt was, this was a foot in the door that said, stop. If we're going to do anything down that strip, and we're going to have multifamily, and we're going to, let's have these individual townhomes, really unique, with extra play area, even a garden, which is conditioned, and well-buffered. I said, to me, this discourages all those fears that you have, and I have, for that whole area. And in looking at those plans and looking at the conditions requested, I thought this would send a message that if you're going to come in like a mile down the road in Raleigh and all that high density, we don't want it on Piney Plains. We don't want it there. If we're going to have the first domino, I want that first domino to look like this one. And so that was my perspective. And, you know, I understand what you're saying. I think we both had the same concern. I just think that this sends a message that we can help manage that concern.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I was, we talked about this when it first came to us, and you brought that up. And I'm curious, are there any plans for updating Piney Plains Road from the way it looks now to anything else? Because I do believe that you have a great point. We look at where we made mistakes on Maynard, where it's 35 or 45, and people are driving 50 or 60, right? We lost the opportunity to use traffic mitigation to slow people down. Do we have an opportunity to do it here on Piney Plains? Do we have something coming up?
So regarding your question, Piney Plains is currently designated as a five-lane thoroughfare. And from what I understand, it's currently developed as such. And regarding your question about whether we have any chance of plans to change that, I'd have to turn to our Transportation and Facilities staff to offer further elaboration.
And we don't currently have any plans to change that. It's, the condition of Piney Plains is basically built out to that five-lane section. It does look like it's short, the extra width lanes on the outside that are traditionally for bike lane. And previously, we've taken a payment in lieu for that item since the sidewalk and curb is already constructed.
So we do have some funding available from payment in lieu? Is that what you're saying? That we could use?
No, just that the road is a little bit deficient from what the current section is. And so I would anticipate we'd take, we would have a little bit of a payment for that.
So when this is, sorry, when this is rezoned and they decide to build, they're not going to improve the road?
No, the current...
Even though it's not to our current standard?
No, it is to our current standard. It's just a little bit short, and we have traditionally, and I don't know, I don't remember all the details, but there was a previous council directive or action that said if there's only the two foot for the extra width for the wide outside lane, that staff could accept just the payment for the extras. And so we've been operating under that for a number of years.
Okay. Sean?
My suggestion on, have the staff evaluate options for changing the character and nature of Piney Plains. Because, you know, on something that's important, don't want to guess. And we've got the best, smartest guessers on the planet, but they're still guessing. And so we can come back. And then that would be a perfect item to evaluate during either our quarterly meetings or during the formalized budget process.
I would really like to see that, unless my colleagues object, because a lot of people are making a left turn off of Tryon, going down Piney Plains into crossroads, and that is the feel. This is part of crossroads, and if you had a median there, that would change the feel of it. And it would also help with what goes on the left side.
So let me ask some questions. My impression, because I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly, it doesn't have curb and gutter right now?
Yes, it does.
It does. All the way down has curb and gutter. Okay.
And a sidewalk.
All right, so both sides have that?
And the, there's not a lot of driveway cuts. These large-lot houses there are going to redevelop, and the apartment complex has three, I think, three or four?
If this is coming to us in a piecemeal fashion, how do we ensure that when the two parcels to the north, I presume that's north, but I'm not 100% sure, of that yellow block there are done in such a way that we don't have a cut in the road, and then a cut in the road, and then a cut in the road, and each one of these behaves kind of like, I think it's like Fenton, you know, when I'm talking about Fenton Estates over Lori off of Davis Drive, where it's like, you know, that one street that has just a couple houses on it? How do we make sure that we don't replicate that here, where we have these little tiny bubbles all the way down Piney Plain? You know, it looks like you could end up with three or four of those if it continues to go in a piecemeal fashion?
I thought, and I asked that when we had the first time through, and they said we had to connect, that there's a stub above it. So if they develop to the north, they're going to have to stub north.
And they won't be allowed to have?
They're going to have to stub up.
Full access.
They can't be, no outlet. They can't be, no outlet if they develop it to the north.
What I would anticipate, we'd see it at the, when we get a plan in front of us, is that we'd want a stub towards Bradbury Way. And then whatever comes in between, we'd have to connect those up, and then we analyze the street network.
And we'd restrict the access out onto Piney Plains for that next piece?
I would, I expect we would. I'd have to take a look and see what the spacing is relative to the, well, it depends on if we come back with a median. We definitely need to look at exactly where it makes sense to have the road, to have the full access movements. With it being a five-lane, there's not much of a requirement to have that straight across the street, but with a median, it would be more important. So I couldn't say for sure. We would strive for minimizing that, and we've got standards for how close we can have the roads on a thoroughfare.
I'm sorry. The advantage is, you know, as those houses do age out and those are clustered, we're going to have the ability to leverage where those cut-throughs are, or those cuts are, not cut-throughs. And so, yeah, I think we've got that under control, and I think we can look at that strip on the way up to, you know, there's enough room there. I mean, you have the same issue, not as bad on the other side, a little farther north there. So the more we look at holistically Piney Plains, the better we can help set the standard for what happens on both sides.
I think you're right. Mr. Stegal?
Well, to build on Councilmember Smith's comments and to add on to what I said earlier, the best way to achieve your goal for Piney Plains, after hearing this this evening, is to do a special area plan for it. So it takes into consideration not just the transportation needs, but also the land planning needs. And certainly, the imaginary community plan does call for specialized areas of study as the council seats fit. And I think this perfectly lends itself to that. So instead of just looking at the road and, I can't remember if it's a road or street, Susan. She's particular about that. I think it's street. Is it street? Yeah, looking at the street, you know, we want to see how the land uses go. So we would, if it pleases the council, go in that direction versus just looking...
I like that idea. I think it's important enough. I really don't want to recreate Maynard, and I really think that's where we're headed if we don't do something. So, and that would make me feel a lot better about what's proposed tonight.
Again, what caught my attention, because I went into that meeting with the exact same concerns, write down everything that you said, where it's located, what it's offering, what it's doing, is the exact quality and the standard that we're looking for. And so, you know, I thought this was like a shot across the bow that says, we're going to hold it to a higher standard. Now overlay that with our commitment to Piney Plains, I think we gain some assurances along the way.
Other comments?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, as we move forward on this, I actually like the idea of townhomes. I mean, if we had seen a whole bunch of these homes come in as one package and a large, you know, high-density apartment, I don't think we'd be having this discussion. I think, Jack, you said it best, you know, this is the best of all possible worlds as this transitions to something else. So I really, I appreciate this rezoning process, especially with the discussion of the traffic, because I think it's a way for us to mitigate and stop doing what we were doing in the past, which is to make big swaths of, you know, transportation, I don't know, runway that people see they, I can just get from here to here, and make it, you know, something pleasing. As Mr. Stegal said when he came here, the thing he liked the best when he came here his first time was seeing all the medians and seeing how green and beautiful it was. And I think we want to keep that.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this rezone. I don't know what number it is.
Seventeen REZ twenty.
Seventeen REZ twenty, Piney Plains.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And based on the discussion I've heard, I'm feeling much better. Before, I was 51, 49, I think you flipped me. So I'm going to support this. Any other, any other comments?
Power of Jack.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Consistency statement, motion?
Make a motion that we move forward with the statement of consistency and reasonable bias.
And it's option A.
Option A.
Option A, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you. We now move to the next two items. We're going to take those together. That's seventeen A zero eight, 3500 Arthur Pierce LLC, Glen SM, and Guy Dale Young Annexation, and seventeen REZ seventeen, Arthur Pierce Road rezoning. And Senior Planner Katie Dry will once again present this item. We'll hear from the Planning and Zoning Board about their recommendation, and we may take action. Let's try.
For your consideration, as a request to rezon and annex 22.4 acres at 3500 and 3512 Arthur Pierce Road. The site is currently developed with two detached dwellings, and there's also an existing cell tower on the site. The Cotswell subdivision is to the west, and the Glen Mint Stone subdivision is to the south. Since the property is currently in Wake County's jurisdiction, annexation into Cary is required in order to apply Cary zoning. The areas in this map that are shaded in yellow, as you can see, are within the town's existing corporate limits. And the current zoning is Wake County Residential Thirty. The applicant's requesting to apply initial town of Cary zoning of transitional residential conditional use. The zoning would keep the land uses residential, but would allow an increased density. They're proposing up to 50 lots with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The applicant's proposing the following conditions for the site: to limit the use to detached residential and neighborhood recreation. They're proposing an age-restricted housing condition where 80% of the dwellings would have at least one person who are age 55 or older. They would have a maximum of 50 lots. They're proposing a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, which is 1,000 square feet more than the minimum required in TR, which is 5,000 square feet. Minimum lot width of 50 feet. The minimum lot width in TR is 40 feet. They're proposing to double their community gathering space to 10,000 square feet. They've also proposed a condition regarding a terracotta barn on the site. Condition number seven regarding the barn was offered after the initial town council public hearing. Cary's historic and architectural inventory listed one house and four outbuildings on the site, and of those, the terracotta tobacco curing barn had the most historic significance. The applicant submitted a condition which read that prior to plat approval, the engineer or the owner shall submit a report from a structural engineer. The condition was worded so that if the report indicates that the barn is not structurally sound, the developer shall have no further obligation regarding preservation of the barn. So since that, since that condition was offered, that the applicant has submitted an engineer report which indicated the barn is not structurally sound. These are a few images from the report, as well as a sealed letter from the structural engineer. So therefore, in accordance with the wording of the condition, there would be no further action from the applicant to convey the barn to the homeowners' association. So we would be looking at that particular condition as have been met. Staff evaluated the rezoning with respects to aspects of the Cary community plan. Some of the policies that were found to be applicable dealt with the housing type, infill, type of housing, and density. The case was also proposing a condition to limit the uses to 55 and older, which directly addresses town policies, which calls for the adequate supply of housing for Cary's growing senior population. The town of Cary's future growth framework map indicates the development category for the subject property is suburban neighborhood. Suburban neighborhoods consist principally of single-family detached development. Staff's recommendation for this case is for approval. The rezoning request was found to be consistent with the policies of the imaginary community plan, specifically policies found in chapters for live, engage, shape, and move. The subject site is designated as part of the suburban neighborhood, which is described as a fairly homogeneous transition ring between the more intense and varied neighborhoods closer to the urban center and the more rural developments outside of the municipal boundaries. Predominant use types for this category include single-family detached large and small lots, with some limited amounts of other housing types. So transitional residential conditional use with the conditions offered may be an appropriate use for the site. The Planning and Zoning Board did have a public hearing on the case on September 25th and recommended approval by a vote of five to one. And the board chair, Mark Evangelista, is here to share the discussion.
Well, you saw the zoning conditions that were put forward. We were quite impressed with those. We liked the use. We thought it was appropriate. It arose that perhaps some of our members are not as clear on the age restriction, on the 55 and over, and how rigidly that can be enforced. So we may take that up and discuss that sometime in the future, the work session, just to be a little more clear, because that is going to probably come up more and more going forward. Our vote against was involving the cell phone tower. There was just no way this member was going to allow residential in the vicinity of a cellphone, a cell tower, plain and simple. That was the only negative aspect of that vote. So that's all I have on that.
Questions for Mr. Evangelista? Thank you.
I first started on the council, 55 and older seems so old.
That's because you were 10.
Now seems young to me.
Like, oh, like, yeah. Senior housing.
Let's try anything else.
Just as a quick reminder, there is an annexation associated with this rezoning. So action needs to be taken first on the annexation, followed by action on the rezoning. Staff recommends that the council discuss the rezoning, however, prior to taking action on the annexation.
So basically, what she's saying, without saying it, is if we think we're going to deny it, they don't want to annex it.
Yeah, I understand that.
Got it.
All righty. Questions, comments?
I want to hear from Ed.
Yes, I want to hear from Ed, too. I had discussed with Ed the barn, and he got me really interested in the barn. That's a very interesting barn. So I hate to see that it's not structurally sound, but when you think of the age, it's not surprising.
Don't get too attached to it. As far as the barn, I guess more particularly the condition that surrounds the barn that was added, I certainly appreciate the applicant adding a condition about that because we didn't see that the first time it came to us. So I appreciate the addition of that. And I've talked to the applicant about it the other day. So with all due respect to the applicant, it's my opinion that the condition itself is very weak and almost useless when it comes to historic preservation. It depends on whether the structure is structurally sound. Well, I would venture to say that how many 100-year-old buildings that have been in disuse for a generation are ever going to be found to be structurally sound by today's standards? It's, I'm sure there's one somewhere, but it's very unlikely. And this one wasn't. And the report is a good report by a very well-known structural engineer, very reputable one, not necessarily one who's that knowledgeable as far as historic preservation is concerned particularly, but a good one. But even if it were found to be structurally sound, and I say this for future reference for us as we see these conditions added, if it were found to be structurally sound, then the applicant would not be touching it, I mean, would be preserving it, which would be great, and then at some point turning it over to the homeowners' association. And that's the end of the applicant's responsibility at that point. While the homeowners' association, fledgling homeowners' association, it's going to take, even if it's structurally sound, it's going to take a lot of money to fix this thing up, to use it in some way. How do we know they're ever going to do that? In other words, there's nothing in this condition that speaks at all to preserving the building in perpetuity. We've seen other conditions added that talk about preservation easements. Capital area preservation gets involved in putting an easement on it. There's nothing here, I mean, the condition itself, it's not going to be structurally sound. If it is structurally sound, it goes to the homeowners' association, the applicant wipes their hands of it, and we have no control over what the homeowners' association is going to do. So it's a bad condition. And I say this in the hopes that we don't see a condition like this added in the future, that we don't use this as a precedent for a historic preservation condition. Having said that on this one, the applicant has fulfilled what the condition says. Katie mentioned that, and it's done. Outside of the barn, outside of the, that particular condition, I think it's a very good rezoning. I think it fulfills a growing need in our community and is in all other ways satisfactory. So the question I always have with this, and I'd be interested to hear the rest of our discussion if we're going to have any, is should I let a dilapidated old barn stand in my way of 50 age-restricted houses? And my gut feel is that I'm not going to let it stand in the way in this case. But it would be a wonderful thing if we could, and I don't know whether you've been able to do that, pursue anything with capital area preservation or see what their thoughts on this, if there's another way outside of this rezoning that, you know, can the barn be moved? Can it, you know, the applicant, they've done what they have to do, but is there something that we could do perhaps as capital area preservation see it as a need? It's certainly not one of the top historically significant buildings in the town of Cary. I mean, it's not the Page Walker, it's not the Nancy Jones House, it's not the Ivy Ellington. So, you know, I don't know whether it's worth us doing anything for it or not, but that stands outside of the rezoning itself.
And I'll just also note that staff has contacted capital area preservation. They do have a copy of the engineering report, and they are investigating this further.
That's good to know. We'll see what happens there, because they are the experts. Terracotta barn may not be an easy thing to move. It may crumble just on the basic, very nature of it.
Terracotta.
Terracotta. So, I mean, we may not be able to do anything with it, but I'm, the good, the benefits of the community, I think, outweighs the old barn at this point. But I want to make a point that we don't use this type of condition as a precedent in the future.
Well noted.
I'm glad you brought that up because I wonder if there is an opportunity earlier in the process to, here we are about to make a decision. If your comments had, and some of your insight now can get in, and I think this is why you're saying this now, as planning staff sees that there's a historic, potential historic preservation opportunity, that we get capital area preservation involved, you know, two months ago when this came to us, you know, maybe we'd be somewhere else down the road, and the condition would have read differently. I don't know.
They did visit the property right in the very early stages, capital area.
Okay.
And thought, after looking at the house and the other outbuildings, that the one worth saving would be the barn.
So they already identified?
The house has vinyl siding, all kinds of additions to it. It's, I mean, it's an old house, but they felt that the barn was worth saving. And the condition came in then, as it came in.
Okay.
I have a question about that. So does it, because it says, because it's not structurally sound, they fulfilled the requirement, but what are they saying that structurally sound doesn't mean it can't be saved, it's just currently not structurally sound?
That's correct. That was the way the applicant chose to word the condition, and given that the report came back indicating it's not structurally sound, given that that's the wording that they used, the condition has been that.
Well, I'm posing as a question. If this site becomes part of Cary, do we have at least in some indirect way more of an opportunity to preserve this than if it just stays in the county and gets developed differently? You know, because they have less standards. I mean, you know, it's kind of weak, but I'm kind of leaning towards this for all the reasons that you said, the age restriction, and I'd rather see it developed to our standards because there's, you see all the other weight spaces there, and I want them coming, I want them to be looking at us as the opportunity to build there than someone else.
Other comments or questions?
So it's not a foregone conclusion that it will be torn down at this moment?
No.
Well, they have no obligation.
No obligation, but there's not a conclusion that it must be torn down?
Yeah, I don't think they're going to do it tomorrow. So we have a little time, I hope, to investigate it.
To work with it.
And to see whether it's worth our while to do it. It may not be worth our while. I don't know.
I would hope we could look at that.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning, or sorry, of the annexation of seventeen, do I use this same number?
Seventeen A oh eight.
Well, you want to make the motion?
No, no, go ahead.
Seventeen A oh eight for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the annexation approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. As opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now the rezoning seventeen R E Z seventeen.
I'll make a motion that we approved such a rezoning. You already said it.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, unanimously.
And there's their consistency statement. Make a motion that we approve seventeen R E Z seventeen, statement of consistency and reasonableness. Option A.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to our last discussion item, sixteen R E Z thirty-two Silverton P D D amendment, Waltonwood. Mrs. Granton will give the report. We're going to hear from the planning and zoning boards about their recommendation, and we may take action. Ms. Grant?
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately forty-one point two six acres located at the intersection of Evans Road and Northwest Cary Parkway. You've seen this parcel before, split in two, parcel A on the north side of Northwest Cary Parkway, parcel I on the south side of Northwest Cary Parkway, both with frontage on Evans Road. Subject property is zoned P D D. It's part of the Silverton Planned Development District, and it's been around for a while. It's been in existence since nineteen eighty-five. So before I delve into this full presentation, I'd just like to take a moment to talk about how complex this particular rezoning request is. We've got to find a balance between different policies in the Cary Community Plan, the two most significant ones being live. This rezoning request that you're going to see presents an opportunity for a variety of housing options, but it also is the removal of land from our inventory of office use. And what you're going to hear tonight is a recommendation from staff for denial. That might seem a little surprising to you, because you're going to see us also point out several really good things about the plan and things that go above and beyond Cary's ordinance standards. So as we go through the process, I hope that helps you understand why we reached the recommendation we did, why the planning and zoning board made the recommendation they did, and then you'll have a better understanding of your opportunities to bring your own insight into the decision-making process. First part of this that makes it complex is this Silverton P D D that has been in place with these two parcels being vacant since prior to nineteen eighty-five. Nineteen eighty-five's when the P D D was developed. We've seen numerous development plans over the years, none of which have come to fruition. Some of them have not sat well with the neighbors, some of them have not sat well with the council. We've heard from the applicant that some of the development opportunities were just not viable, because this was a tweener site. You had residential surrounding it, and then you had commercial nodes in close proximity that were much more attractive to some of the developers. So it's been vacant for a long time, and we're eager to see some development take place. The growth framework map creates an opportunity that didn't exist previously. Back a couple years ago, when we had the land use plan that looked a little bit like a zoning map, it seemed to be a little bit more cut and dried. Office designation, okay, you either do a comp plan amendment and a rezoning, or you don't go forward with it. This growth framework map creates all sorts of new opportunities for development, but also creates opportunities for differences of opinion when you're evaluating the plan. So you've got two different designations on the growth framework map that are butting up against each other. To the north on parcel A designated as employment mixed-use campus, and on the south, where there's a life care community proposed, traditional neighborhood. So one of them seems pretty straightforward, the other one took a little extra effort. The employment mixed-use campus definition relatively complex, lots of details, lots of different thought that went into this as the planning staff evaluated it and made their recommendation. The applicant has proposed a preliminary development plan. So it's an amendment to the P D D, but because this was in a mixed-use overlay district when first submitted, this preliminary development plan was a requirement. Little bit more effort on the part of the applicant, but it also gave them the opportunity to both look for modifications to development standards and ways that they could exceed our land development ordinance standards. So there's an illustration that gives you a good depiction of some of the open space and buffers that are proposed. Parcel A on the north side of Northwest Cary Parkway is proposed for a multifamily residential development. Specifically, they've got two-hundred-and-twelve multifamily residential units, but two different styles with the development. Some are going to be more of a traditional apartment style, or a flat, residential flat style, and then what they referred to as townhome-style apartments, or residential multifamily, meaning that they were two-story with individual entrances. Also, as part of their development plan, the applicant has proposed to construct a greenway trail along the northern property line, and this is something that would be of great benefit to the town. They are seeking some modifications to L D O standards, fifteen percent parking reduction, and a minor separation reduction to access points for internal driveways by ten feet. Parcel I is proposed for two uses, on tract one, a life care community, and then separated with a landscape buffer, thirty-seven townhomes, which would be subdivided and under individual ownership. Here, they've proposed removal of a champion tree, which is centrally located on the site. This is the location of the champion tree, which, as you can see based on its location, it would be very difficult to do any sort of development on this property based on the location of that tree. And they've also proposed to have parking located along travel aisles within the site. There was a traffic impact analysis conducted back in February twenty-seventeen, and these show the intersections and access points to the subject property that were studied. There was a great deal of community feedback on this that was both in opposition of the request and in support of the request, and I'm sure you've heard a number of these yourselves. We heard from several neighbors at the town council public hearing, voicing a need for neighborhood services, some uncertainty for the non-residential neighbors to the north side of parcel A about whether or not residential would make a good transition, and then loss of office land. We also heard several people talk to us about exceptional design that was being proposed, that this did make a good transition, especially the life care community and the townhomes and the buffers, and that this plan does recognize and meet a need for housing options, especially for senior housing. New conditions have been added by the applicant since you first saw this request, and this rendering shows you something that would be substantially similar to what you might expect for the multifamily dwellings. These pitched roofs, this masonry, garage per unit, all of these things are reinforced, as you'll see in the staff report, by specifically worded zoning conditions that help to guarantee this look for the multifamily. I don't have a rendering for the townhomes, because that would be under separate ownership, but here, too, they've offered a list of zoning conditions to provide two stall garages for each unit, first-floor bedroom with an in-suite bath, same degree of standards about pitched roofs, varied roof lines, and windows on the sides of buildings. They've also listened to a concern that was raised by a citizen seeking a traffic signal at the intersection of Winfair Drive and Northwest Cary Parkway. So since you saw this last, a new zoning condition was proposed by the applicant, that if warranted, they would provide that signal. So again, we've spent some time looking at the Cary Community Plan, doing an in-depth analysis. Yes, this provides greater variety of housing options, but it removes land from an office inventory. And staff has taken this very seriously, because for a number of years, we've heard concerns expressed from the council about the dwindling supply of office land, and we have this analysis showing different office sites in Cary. But we've also been looking at a lot of development that's been occurring recently, and a lot of rezoning requests that have come in, and development plans that are currently in review or were recently approved. The Green Level Duke Health Site on Green Level West Road has had a submittal of a development plan and rezoning. Cary Town Center Phase Two has been submitted. Fenton at the Eastern Cary Gateway Site, the Healthcare Building at Guernsey Trail has a grading plan in review, an active site plan, MetLife Building Phase Three, Regency Woods in the Regency Park area, and a new building in the SAS Campus. So there's lots of new development and office land that's either being used for the first time or repurposed, like with the Guernsey Trail location. So the rationale behind staff's planning, planning staff's recommendation for denial was very focused. It was very specific. We put the greatest weight on that loss of office land. That was our primary focus. It's not to say that there were not other good aspects of the plan, but that's where we put our attention. But I do want to point out some of the other factors that are really important, and that's that in the definition of the employment mixed-use campus, both office and multifamily are listed as predominant uses. Townhomes and single-family attached are listed as incidental uses. So that's an important factor to take into consideration as you're weighing your options with this request. Another thing to consider, and this is something that the applicant brought up, staff looked at this site, and we had a desire to see a vertical mix of uses. We had a vision in mind of what we thought would be ideal at this site. The applicant said, couldn't you take a look at it and take into consideration the larger land area and evaluate this as a horizontal mix of uses? And that is something that someone could consider, because you've got some residential, but you've also got institutional with a church, you've got a large area of planned development here, which has a variety of office uses and light industrial uses, office uses in the Silverton area and along Weston Parkway. So there are multiple ways that you can look at this request and take it into consideration. And before I add my final comments, I would like to call Mr. Evangelista to offer the recommendation of the planning and zoning board, and then I'll wrap up with some final remarks.
So the recommendation from the staff report was for denial. We were unanimous in denial, and I know what you're thinking. If the staff report would have told us to jump off a bridge, none of us would have jumped off a bridge. But the idea here is we were equally affected by the loss of office. This is a significant intersection of two major roads. That's something you don't see in availability for office in too many spots anymore. Yes, there's this horizontal mix of uses, but that, a vertical mix of uses is short walking distances. Horizontal mix of uses isn't vertical mix of uses, and that's kind of what we envisioned for some of these things. So that affected us as well. The density, we were okay with that, but it was just, and we were also very okay with the intergenerational concept of this, that some of these parcels would be, as folks got older and they transitioned into a different level of quality of life, they would be able to live there, and perhaps grandparents and grandchildren could live across the street from one another. That seemed impressive to us, but we just could not get past losing all of this office into institutional opportunity at a major intersection. And one other thing was, perhaps had these parcels come in separately, it might have been a little different, but to, and I understand you want to look at the picture in total and holistically, but to just give up two major, actually half of a major intersection there, and lose all the office and institutional for some sort of multifamily, we just couldn't get past that, and not one of us could.
Mr. Evangelista, I have some questions. I'm sure my colleagues do, too. Parcel I, did you have a lot of discussion on parcel I?
That drew more favor from us than did parcel A.
And then on parcel A, when you talk about office, did you talk about what you meant by office? Are you talking two-to-three-story office building, medical-type office building, or are you talking a MetLife tower?
Well, we didn't talk too much about that, but the idea was if something on the order of a MetLife tower was in the future, it would have been there by now. Something that significant on an available parcel like that, had it been attractive for that, it would have probably been developed as such at this point. So we were thinking probably more of the medical office, as you mentioned, something that could integrate more with a walking community around it.
And did you talk about mix of uses in parcel A? Let's say, for example, the arpareedom was picked up in place there. Did you talk about that?
Yes, and that was something that we thought was an attractive idea. But we weren't asked to look at parcel A
Sure.
in a vacuum. And once, and because it was presented that parcel A and I are so intertwined, you can't mess around with one without dramatically affecting the other. It was really hard to, we had to look at it as an all-or-nothing kind of thing. You don't like to look at these that binary, but sometimes it just falls out that way.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Evangelista.
So I just wanted to say, in summary, again, this was not easy. There are a lot of factors that came into play. The applicant worked really hard to introduce some new zoning conditions that create some very attractive buildings. We're getting a greenway that we've wanted for a long time, great buffers, good transitions. It looks like a good plan. Staff was just extremely focused on that office component, and that's what we used to make the decision. And I've been looking forward to saying this, the decision was fifty-one forty-nine. So, you know, you learn from others, you know, how difficult this can be, and this is new territory for staff to be making recommendations at this stage. It's not black and white, it's not cut and dried, a lot of different factors that go into this. So we used our insight, the research that had been done, that land inventory that had been done, and that's what we applied as planning staff. Now, you get to take into consideration our recommendation, the thoughts and recommendations of the planning and zoning board, and then your own insight about what's appropriate for this site, what you'd like to see, how long it's been vacant, and what's viable, based on what you've heard from the applicant and your own experience about the market conditions. So that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available, as is the applicant, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granton. Questions, comments? I'm sure they're coming.
I don't really have any questions. I've been kind of intimately involved in at least one of these parcels for the last ten years, but do have quite a bit of comments.
Okay.
First, Ms. Granton, thank you so much for that presentation. That was very informative, very helpful. Just as we struggle with decisions all the time, I'm sure planning department does exactly the same, so I appreciate you telling us that story. But, and I'd also like to start out by thanking the applicant, who, at least in my, thankfully, has not given up, has not walked away from this piece of property, and has just made a commitment to do something and do something quality. I don't, at least I don't have any concerns. I haven't heard many concerns from anybody or my colleagues regarding the senior living portion of the project. I think that is an amazing use here, definitely fills a need that we have in our community. You know, we're always talking about, you know, we just talked about it, what, two days ago, when we were at the Glen Air ribbon-cutting for their new healthcare center, about, you know, the growing need for senior housing, senior services, and things like that. So this would be another, I think, amazing get for Cary and help fill that need in our community. So I think much of the heartburn and discussion is centered around the northern parcel, and, you know, that loss of mixed-use employment center or office, it's kind of been, I don't want to say confusing at times, is what exactly is it designated? Because like, sometimes we refer to it, it was, it's office, but no, it's mixed-use employment, or it could be commercial, or, so I can understand not wanting to lose the office, but also recognize that the residential is an allowable use in that mixed-use employment designation. So if they were just proposing two-hundred-and-twenty-some-odd apartments or townhomes, I probably wouldn't support the project. I think it's Ms. Robinson or maybe Jack that always says that if we're going to rezone office to residential, there needs to be a compelling case. There needs to be, actually, I think Jack says the wow factor, you need to wow us.
He says, well, I say compelling.
You say compelling case. I think this project does that. I think that, given the conditions they've put on, as we saw in the illustration... Uh, I think that, given the conditions they've put on, um, as we saw in the illustration earlier, basically, the conditions they proposed ensure that we get pretty much what looks like that. Um, seventy-five percent masonry, the pitches of roofs, the direct-entry garages, the first-level masters, um, the gathering space, um, it just, it's, it's gonna be a unique residential product. It's, I guess, classified in some ways as apartments, but they're not really apartments. It's more of a townhome-type living, so, um, I think the reality is the markets looked at this site and determined that it's really not a good office site, um, nor is it really a good commercial site. If it was, something probably would already be there. Unfortunately, regarding commercial, it's in between, um, Park West and the Arboretum. You know, could you maybe get a little service or something? Maybe, but, a-again, nothing's been proposed as of yet. Um, I found it fascinating that at the eleventh hour, a commercial developer shows up interested in putting a grocery store there. Um, kinda wondered where he's been the last couple of years, um, because I know that the applicant has reached out to half a dozen or more different grocers. I know they've reached out to Publix. I know they've reached out to Wegmans. I know they've reached out to Harris Teeter. I know they've reached out to CVS, and, you know, it's what, part of what's been taking so long to try to do something with this is trying to bring what either the council or some of the community have said they wanted. And, so while we, we might have a, a vision or a theory of what might happen here, the reality in the market is telling us something else. So, um, I love the fact that we're getting a greenway. Um, I think that what they're doing on the corners, they call them pocket parks, although I wouldn't really call them a park. It's just a really pretty entry features and things like that, the community space, um, and I do agree, looking at the area holistically and more much broader, you know, there, there is a good mix of uses here. Could you get some small doctor's office, medical offices or such? Maybe, but there's also land right across the street on the opposite quadrant zone for that, and we haven't gotten any there yet either, so, uh, if there was a market for that, why isn't it coming in across the street? So, I, I just, one of the few times I think it makes a good, uh, case to rezone from, um, mixed-use or office or commercial to residential, I, I, I think this makes a very compelling case. Um, I'm also pleased that the majority, um, of residents that I've heard from support it. We've had residents in the past that, you know, pretty much opposed everything that was brought forward for this, uh, property because they knew we could do better. And I'm not hearing those residents oppose this because I think they realize the quality and, um, and, and what they're gonna get, and, and they're satisfied with that. Um, and I think maybe for those folks that might be looking for a walkable mixed-use project or something, i- if it did end up going to a grocery store in a sea of asphalt, that's not gonna be a very walkable project, in my opinion. So, for those reasons, I'm, I'm, would support the request, rezoning, and I'd be happy to make a motion when the time comes.
Okay, other comments? Well, I'm not gonna, the only thing I would maybe challenge the argument is I don't mind waiting for the market. And I think we've had many times where, uh, we, we rushed a judgment and we flipped things. Uh, but all the other arguments you made, how long this has been that way, how long a lot of those neighbors have lived with the unknown, even though they like the greenery there, you know, that type of thing. Um, if you look at it as a complete entity, and you look at the years that we've looked at, a lot of, a lot of things here, you know, I think, I think this has merit. Um, but for me, it, I'm not, I'm not, uh, let's say, flipping and endorsing because of the market, because I still think, um, uh, there are times and places where, you know, we, you know, using your, your phrase, Jennifer, you wait for, you say wait for great, but, yeah, I wait for the right thing, but we have waited a long time, and now, when you take away the unknown on the other side, that, that's just really, you know, Deborah, you said those right percentages. You were, you were close, or fifty-point-oh-one and forty-four.
Eight-point.
But, but, uh, you know, I'm gonna look at the holistic thing here, and I'm gonna look at the quality of it and the conditions of it, and some of the other benefits we get. And, uh, you know, like you, like you said, uh, Don, I, I know a lot of people out there, and, um, you know, for years, many of them only knew one word, no, and I, I see a lot more grudging maybe, but acceptance of this kind of a concept, so, you know, I think, I think the point was made by Don. I, I understand that and agree. Other comments?
Well, I've been looking for ways to try to say yes to this for a while now. Um, Waltonwood is great. The current Waltonwood in Cary is tremendous, and I'm really happy the applicant's decided to open another Waltonwood in Cary. Uh, it's gonna be as good, if not better, than the one we have. And, uh, I'm also very happy that the majority of the neighbors have, um, given their stamp of approval to this, or at least have not complained too loudly to us about this, considering all the false starts that we've had over the years. Um, and if approved, parcel I, I think would be a great benefit to the Cary community, no question about it. Uh, and if parcel I were coming in by itself, I would enthusiastically support it. Or if it were coming in with parcel A, and parcel A contained a mixed-use, contained something other than just residential, I would enthusiastically support the rezoning. Uh, but we preach mixed-use everywhere in town, and it just seems that we're foregoing this particular location, which to me seems like a great location for that. Are we gonna get MetLife office towers here? Probably not, um, but I think we would get some kind of office, some kind of retail that might support, provide services to the neighbors, and all we're providing the neighbors here is with more neighbors, and, and, and that bothers me. So, looking at the whole thing, I, I have not convinced myself to vote yes, and, um, I just don't think it's the best use for that parcel. And that's a key discuss, key thing when you talk about a rezoning, is it the best use for that parcel? I don't think it is, so I'm gonna be, uh, supporting the Planning and Zoning Board recommendation and the staff recommend, original staff recommendation, and I'm, I'm gonna have to vote no.
Other comments or questions?
I'll echo Ed's comments. I mean, I, I think for, if you think the right thing is non-residential, then this is beautiful, and I think you guys have done a great job at really putting in excellent conditions in here, and, Don, you've worked really hard with the applicant to convey the desires of the community, so I think in that sense, it's wonderful. The, the question is, is it, is non-resident, or is residential the right thing for here? For, for parcel A? I think parcel I's awesome.
Um, I, I'm often torn about fifty-one, forty-nine percent. I'm often torn with these. I, I definitely agree with, uh, Mr. Yarha, that if, you know, one of these comes in and the other, you know, I would enthusiastically support, um, parcel I. But one of the things that I also like to look at is the fact that we often say that we don't like to consider these parcels separately. Bring us the whole plan. We say this over and over. Don't bring us individual parcels, one at a time. We wanna look at the entire cohesive, uh, solution or development. So, from that perspective, I think it is a cohesive solution development, and I also think that there are services and commercial that even though we would lose this one partial, that are just surrounding it. You know, Park West still is growing continuously. We have across the street from Park West of, another one of those failing malls, where it could easily be converted to, uh, commercial. Also, I noticed it says commercial. I would much rather see this than a grocery store there, personally. I think it's not the right place for a grocery, especially when we have it on both ends of the road. I think you have to, or I have to, I don't, telling anyone else how to look, but I have to pull myself up a little bit and say, not just for this particular development, but for this region as a whole, are there already services that are being supported and provided for, and does the loss of just this one portion actually add to the community? And I think it does, so I, I'll be supporting this motion.
Other comments or questions, or are we ready for a motion? Mr. France?
Make a motion to approve sixteen REZ thirty-two.
Here's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to two. And then, whoops.
Make a motion to approve the reasonableness and consistency statement for sixteen REZ thirty-two.
Option A.
Aye. Sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Bush, would you please read a motion to carry us into closed session?
Um, hold on. Hold on. The consistency statement. Consistency statement, there were two no's.
We didn't vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought we did.
Let's, let's have a revote on the consistency statement. There's a motion to approve option A on the consistency statement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Oh, just one.
Six-one. Sorry about that.
It's approved, so.
Yeah.
Ms. Bush, will you read this, uh, motion to go into closed session?
Certainly. Pursuant to GS one forty-three, three-eighteen, A one-three-five, I move that we hold a closed session to instruct the town staff, or what are we doing, concerning the position to be taken by or behalf of the town in negotiating the price and material terms of contract or proposed contract for acquisition of property owned by Charles Lee Cotton Heirs located at fourteen-oh-eight Wimberly Road, Apex, North Carolina, for the purpose of the water plant expansion. Consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS one thirty-two, one dot two, under one forty-three, three-eighteen, ten-e.
Second.
There's a motion, and it's second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we are in closed session.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? It's unanimous. We adjourn. Thank you.
This has been a production of Keri TV. Visit the Town of Keri website at townofkiri.org.